Citizens comments, is anyone? We, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. We're reopening the meeting and asking for any citizens comments? Do we have any green cards?
No, come on.
Okay, with that, we will continue on. And Ms. Tammy, you go right ahead.
Okay. I'm going to kind of wrap the next three items up together. They all kind of go together instead of repeating myself. So our cash and investments, of course, this time of year, our cash is a little low. Our tax collections this last month was about, it was about $30,000. So that doesn't get us very far. And so we do have to dip into some of our investments at this, at this time of year. You know, the end of November, we'll start seeing some revenues from our, the tax collections. And interest rates, the Fed did drop the rates, so our interest rates are down. And from conference and different things that I've attended, it is expected to go down some more. We're still in a better place than we were a few years ago where we were saying 40 basis points or 50 basis points because we weren't even getting 1%. So we're still doing, you know, better than that. We have been, we've had to withdraw to meet our payroll needs. Keep calling Mr. Mullins saying, "I need money." So we did make a little bit over $40,000 in interest in September. So not bad for, for the amount of money that we had in the bank at the time. So once we start seeing some more cash flow coming in, we will invest those in, back into our enhanced cash pool and our cash pool and Florida Prime. So our financial statements, we add, these were sent to you this weekend. I hope you got a chance to look at them. Our general fund, we're looking a little bit better than last year. And that's mostly because of our, our surplus at the end of the fiscal year is able to sustain us. Because at the same time as last year, our revenues are not enough to meet our expenditures because of the cash flow right now. So if you look at the general fund, you know, last year, our expenditures were exceeding revenues by 3.9. This year, it's about 4.8. That's mostly due to our, you know, our $1,200 bump for the teachers. We're meeting that. Now cash will start coming in and hopefully that'll start flipping. We've received about 16% of our original revenue, whereas we've spent about 19% of our expenditures. So that would explain that. We will start collecting more money. Our other funds are doing okay. The food service fund balance is up a tiny bit. Of course, they can't go too high because they can only hold three months operating money in reserves. Our debt service fund, we did pay an interest payment at the end of September on our bonds. And then in April, we'll look to buy another sinking fund. So we are up to a little over $11 million in our sinking fund to pay our $35 million that's due in 2027. Let's see. Our capital projects fund, that has kind of been ever-changing. The work plan, it was shut down, it was reopened, it was shut down. And we finally got it to you today. So we are doing better than we were last year. That's mostly because our property values have increased. So we are bringing, we will be bringing in more revenues and this year for taxes. Self-insurance is remaining sound and is doing very well. And, you know, we're, we have money in reserves now for any catastrophic claims that we may have for that. So that's pretty much our investments, our financial statements, our budget. Now that we've settled the negotiations, we'll be able to, you know, make some more projections now based on, we know how much money we're, we're going to dip into the fund balance a little bit for those, those raises and stuff. And then we'll be able to come up with some projections where we'll be at the end of the year. The second cap, or the third calculation should be coming out. They, it used to come out in December, now it comes out in January. So we won't have those new figures until probably the February board meeting. But based on the counts that we did in October. So, any questions?
We are, $35 million due 2027.
Yes.
Due?
Due, no ma'am, just the 35 million. No, we've paid the Cristo River primary that was paid off boom, boom, boom. And then we started taking that same amount and putting it in sinking funds. So we buy an investment every year. Our financial advisor finds us the best investment in return for our money. And we actually did pretty well this year on the investments that we have for that sinking fund. So we have about $11 million saved right now for that. And that's separate from our other funds. That's held in escrow with our, our financial agents. Any other questions? All right, have a good evening.
Current legal matters. You love that. If somebody would like to make a motion on number 19 and do it as A, B, and C, we could probably take it that way.
Okay, I'll make a motion on item 19 to approve the minutes of the September 24th, 2019 special meeting and facilities workshop, along with minutes from the October 8th, 2019 administrative hearing, regular meeting, and public hearing. And the minutes of the October 22nd, 2019, special meeting and workshop.
I have motion by Ms. Council, second by Ms. Powers, to approve the minutes of the September 24th, 2019, special meeting and facilities workshop. The approval of the minutes of the October 8th, 2019 administrative hearing, regular meeting, and the public hearing. And approval of the minutes of the October 22nd, 2019, special meeting and workshop. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
I have motion carries 5-2-0. Last opportunity for citizens comments.
No green cards.
No green cards. And any other business? Everybody left over there, so it's Mr. Mullin. Mr. Dodd.
Yeah, I've got several items. I'll try to get through them quickly. Of course, Veterans Day Parade, I already mentioned that. But the Veterans Day program at Emerson Primary School is always a great program. I was able to be there and our veterans in the classroom. I know Ms. Hemmels and staff's worked hard to continue that program. Mr. Bach, I think, did a good job with it. I mean, he's, he was constantly getting it out there. I talked to several veterans who were in the classroom and they, they all enjoy it and it's a very positive program. So thank you for keeping that alive and moving forward. And, you know, I love the red ribbon week picture for LeCanto Primary, you know, keeping that going with talking to kids and teaching kids about the dangers of drugs and alcohol. And we know about vaping. You know, we're learning more and more about the harmful effects of vaping. We've got to continue to keep that out there with our students. I was at the Emerson Arts Festival, had got to see those student displays at the Emerson Arts Festival. Very nice. Living History Days at Fort Peaper State Park, very well attended by our fourth graders. You know, that's the history for the fourth grade. And we had a number of schools there for two days of living history. I did make it out to the Union Easi spaghetti dinner. They're fundraising.
Oh, right.
A big crowd there. It's been several years since I've been out there. But, and they were very happy to see me out there and very appreciative of our work, too, as we transitioned that program over. And I asked them a little bit about how that's going and, oh, everything's just great. So it's really nice to know. I'm glad to have them as part of our, our district or our program. And, you know, we approved those donations. The Phil Royal Legacy gave $1,000 checks to all the middle schools at the Unity Day. And I know Ms. Council's there, too, so appreciate you coming. And those principals, those great turnout students for the walk and for the presentation. Those royal acts of kindness, those items for middle schools to be able to help students in need. And the $3,000 donation at Cristo River High School was for the, you know, the Royal, the EMT program that I understand hopefully might be up second semester. See, I assume, so, you know, that'll be a great program because that's going to prepare students for a job right out of high school. And there is a need for EMTs and paramedics that continue on. And who knows? A lot of times those students will go on into the medical profession, whether it's to medical school or PA school or whatever, something. And I did make it out to the practical nursing program graduation. I hadn't been there in several years, but that was at Cornerstone. Very nicely do the little candle, the lamp. So light the candle. And Ms. Stillard was, does a wonderful job with that. Stowe Douglas, the MSD Commission's second report was released on November 1st. It's on the FDLE website, 389 pages. Mr. Bradshaw asked me, "How, how many pages is that thing?" And I, I don't know, it wasn't as long as the first one, but it is 389 pages. So of course, they do put a lot of the interviews in there from all the personnel. But that is out. And I know there will be a big discussion in the legislature about those recommendations. But we also have a safety committee meeting here Thursday for our district that I'm, that I go as one of my appointed committees. I didn't know if there was anything that you would want, any board members have anything that you'd like for me to ask or bring up at that meeting?
I think some of the conversations we've had in the shade session, those can, you know, I would, it would just echo those.
Yeah, yeah, we have, that's what we talked about, but we've covered those. But I'll continue to, you know, continue to look at those issues. But...
I think you were right about the drills. And I think that's, that's an open conversation that part, that on the commission, you've been talking about. And there are some recommendations that look like in the second piece.
The, the recommendations for the commission is to lower the number of drills. And there is drill fatigue that we have to be aware of. You know, with, with the 10 fire drills, one a month. And then the legislature passed Act of Sale on drills that mean as many as there are fire drills so that we're doing 20. But the, we had some presentations and talked a lot about, you know, what, what is really enough and whether or not it'll fly with the fire services. And, you know, we did have some endorsements from, I think it was the, one of the Fire Chiefs Associations that said, "But yes, that would be okay is to lower the number of fire drills from 10 to 6 and 6 active salient drills for elementary school." So there'd be six and six. And then for secondary, for middle and high schools, there'd be four fire drills and six active salient drills. So we really would be going from 20 drills to 10 in secondary and from 20 drills to 12 in elementary. And there is a little bit of more specifics on what the drills have to be. I mean, we're doing all these things. And some districts don't move for a drill. You know, they go over things in the classroom and say, "This is, if this happens, you know, here." And, you know, they're not moving. And so everything that was recommended, we're already doing all of it. I mean, this isn't going to impact us at all because we are already doing all those things.
And I mean, you hear from our kids how confident it's making them feel.
Yeah.
And you heard that today from the little girl from Full City. And we see that when we're out at schools and we get to observe the drills. It gives our kids a sense of confidence, I think, that they're, that they're able to do the things that they're doing.
Yes.
Encouraged.
Yes. And then the last thing that I had was, I had mentioned, I think it may have just gotten, I don't know, I don't think a decision was made. But when I tell people how to get to our meetings on the website, I would like the board docs, I'd like to have a little something that says how to get to our agendas. Because it has our archived agendas. But I, you know, I'll tell people to go on there, go to the school board tab and then, you know, go to our meetings. And, and so I, I wish we could just add to that board doc slash...
Current agenda.
Current agenda or, I mean, I guess that's what it would be, right? The current agenda. On, on our main website, on our main, on our homepage, when you click over by Citrus County School Board.
If you don't know, your board docs has the agenda, you wouldn't know where the agenda goes.
And you know, if worst case, the worst, if it doesn't allow it, you could cheat it by putting it as an address. Oh, that's right.
Okay, I spoke to Lindsay about that. And she said she was going to go in and do it. I thought that she did.
Well, I didn't know if maybe, I didn't know what Thomas said. I didn't know if maybe there was some technical reason. But I just thought, maybe there's another way.
There's got to be a way to do something.
I don't see it. She said she was going to put it on there, but I will double check with her tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's a great.
That's all I have, thank you.
Ms. Ginger, if you pause for one minute, Legal wants to come back.
So you mentioned the vaping. Yesterday, I sent you a link. Palm Beach, the lead attorney for the state of Florida involved in the vaping litigation and the law, the law firm out of Kansas City, they made a presentation to the Palm Beach County School Board in a workshop setting. And I sent you a link to the article that was in the newspaper. But I also went to their, they do, they put their stuff out on YouTube after a while. So I sent you a link. It's a 30-minute workshop, probably 25 or, you know, 20, 25 minutes of it is a presentation that those attorneys did to the Palm Beach County School Board and Palm Beach County Assembly. I didn't watch the special meeting they had right after it, but they did prove to join into that litigation.
Yeah.
Y'all asked for some information.
Yeah.
I think that's a good starting place. And if you have any more information, Steve Mayer, who's the, well, lead counsel, has emailed me a couple times, saying they come and talk here or do, or do anything. But if you got any more, if you need any more information after reviewing that, let me know. And I can at least, I can talk to you and maybe get some more information or relay it or I can request it again.
Yeah, thank you for saying that. I hadn't had a chance to look at it yet, but I'm glad that we can, I can look at that. And speaking of though, our, our security meeting is Thursday at 9:00. And the upward bound, there's a second upward bound, I think, for middle and high schools. I will be able to be at that second one. I'll be there tomorrow, right? But I did hear that they were going to do a special presentation for Ms. Darling at this Thursday.
One of the, one of the veterans that was directing us yesterday is also a Lord Terry. And I recognize his face.
I'm wrong.
And he said, "Mrs. Darling is going to come and say something tomorrow."
Oh, tomorrow, okay. She said it was Thursday, but, okay. Very good.
Ms. Ginger.
Well, I thanked Mr. Hebert for driving to Miss Daisy's. And my, my leg is so much better than it was. Sam can tell you, I should have stopped and get ice for me when we were at LeCanto Primary School. I was walking around with a crutch. But I didn't want to take a chance on walking all that long away. Because I haven't done any walking on my left leg. But I'm feeling good and I'm not taking any meds. God is good, that's all I know. I've got a bunch of S A Cs that I've attended. I've got a bunch and worked with 10. I've got the Renaissance on Thursday. I've got LPS tomorrow. I did Home Asylum last week, so busy. And, and there are children in all of those that participate, just like here.
That's good.
Which is great. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Ms. Powers?
Just mentioning the art show, which I like to refer to each year. And Hannah's Art from the Heart, again, a little table. And, and everything's so well. These are children from LeCanto Elementary School make the pottery. And the pottery is sent down for the art show. And the money's made from the pottery to go to cancer research on children. So it's, it's an incredible lesson to teach children that what they do can make a difference. And I'm just like the Full City when they would do, what they do makes a difference. I'm also going to the SAC meetings. I went to Pleasant Grove and I'll be going tomorrow, day after tomorrow, to Cristo River Primary. And I think I always have about five schools we go to. And I learned quite a bit of information. As I said, one of the things that impressed me the most were reports from the schools. And of course, at the SAC committees, we discuss this, so much information. I tell you, sometimes I don't see how a few of you do your jobs. It's too much work for anyone even being. It's an incredible amount. And as you suggest, and I hope people do go online and see what is done at, at the school and then at the committee, too. Derek was here. And Derek is going to be going over to St. John Paul's School, which, which has an IB program for elementary. And it feeds into our LeCanto IB program. So he's going to go over and talk with them. And I hope to be able to go over and do the same.
Good.
Two of my children went to St. John Paul's. It's called Central Catholic. And they, they did a phenomenal job. And it's still a really phenomenal job. And now with the IB feeding into us, and he said, "Thanks so very much, St. John Paul."
Trinity's probably not very happy.
No.
Because, because they are feeding right into LeCanto.
They are, yeah. We're thrilled with it. And those are the three things.
Ms. K.
Well, I only have four SAC schools and they've all met. But I did three of them were elementary schools and the little kids are absolutely gorgeous. Forest Bridge has a suggestion box. And the first suggestion is always, "We need more playground equipment." But they, and Bart handled the meeting because he was at another meeting. And this little boy just kept voting. He wanted to be her. And Bart handled him so beautifully. He just did a really good job. Really very, very proud of, proud of all of our schools and the work that they do. Their two improvement plans were phenomenal. And went to LeCanto Middle School and haven't seen the therapy cow yet, but... Yeah, but we've heard about it. Now, did we have the twin goats yet? Not yet. So Jen English is probably one of the most phenomenal. It was interesting to see Citrus come for Ag. But Jen English is just a phenomenal Ag teacher. I mean, she is so devoted. And that's one reason when I said we were doing calendars, they said, "It doesn't matter what week it is. These kids are going to take their handouts to the fair." But, but she's got this little cow that's born early, rejected by the mom. And the kids have all adopted it. And they call it her. Their name is Dot. And she's the therapy cow at LeCanto Middle now. We got something new going.
That is so cool.
Yeah.
Okay. I wanted to thank Mr. Dodd for bringing up the Cristo River EMT program. It, it's my understanding of the, the equipment, there's a lot of special equipment that's needed to get the classroom certified by the state. And I understand that CF has sent that equipment. And it's there, it's getting set up for the state to approve that. So progress is getting made and I'm, I'm really excited about that. I know Dr. Connors has been, it is, she has a connection there that doesn't, that transcends just her Cristo River administrative position. Been busy with SAC meetings as well. I was also been very busy leading up to that with swimming. As some of you know, we hosted on Saturday, October 26th, 2019. Citrus County hosted the FHSAA 2A District 4 Swimming Championship Meet at the YMCA Pool in LeCanto. Something that could not have been done if it was not for this board and for making that happen. It is believed that it's the largest swim meet that has ever taken place in Citrus County. We had over 500 swimmers, coaches, officials, volunteers, spectators, covering 10 teams from all the way down to the Tampa Bay area. We had a huge positive response as a result of it. We've really had been planning this in one fashion or another for the last number of years since the last started of how to pull it all off. And I, I was very pleased with it. As a result, in the 2A, which we now have one high school that's gone to 3A. But in the 2A 4 district in Citrus County, we sent 11 relay teams and 22 individual swimmers to swim on at regionals. From regionals, five swimmers and one diver went on to swim at states. States is a little more challenging to meet because only the 24 fastest swimmers in the state get to move on. And so with that, we had one of our swimmers that tied for the highest award ever of a swimmer in Citrus County. Actually, the person he's tied with is one of Mr. Mullin's swimmers from when he was a principal at Citrus High, Jimmy Baker. And, and that, now we can add to that is Marshall Wilson. But he does have the fastest time of a 21.23 on the 50 freestyle, making him the fastest swimmer in Citrus County history. He beat a 23-year-old record from one of Marshall's coaches, which is also the Cristo River High School Dean, Cliff Dyer. So I just congratulate all of them. We have 3A states next week where LeCanto has sent on two swimmers. And we're, we're excited about that. That's Sophia McQueso and Noah Christensen. So we will be rooting them on as they, they go to that. Upward bound, as you mentioned, we've got tomorrow. Something to superintendent, I know that there's, I serve on FHSAA appeals. Mr. Dodd serves on the board of directors for the state of FHSAA. I have learned a lot. I have really learned to appreciate FHSAA much more than I ever did before. Because I do think that there's a lot of things they're trying to do really well. And you've sat on appeals, I think of you very often when, when I hear, "Oh, just let them play," as the superintendent would say. But there, you know, there's a lot of rules that have changed. There's been changes Mr. Dodd's talked about. I know our athletic handbook is probably needing to be updated. And I know that there's conversation, I think, going on with Mr. Bishop and the athletic directors. And I think they're working on, on doing that. One of the inputs that I would say, and we've, we've talked about it elsewhere, is vaping. If vaping maybe can get addressed within the vaping and social media as it relates to athletic privileges, I think there, that we need to, to include some of those aspects into our handbook. It's kind of been pre, you know, it's been predated before that. But those, those are issues that I think our coaches are facing. And if we can help them, I, I think it would be helpful. With that, I think I have come to the end of mine. And so if there is not any other business, we will...
I have some.
No, yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Right, yeah, your request before you call me.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Hebert, Ms. Mullin's been to Cristo River a couple times and talked to their department heads and asked them to give feedback if we could do it at most of our schools before we put the principal in there. Dr. Connors' school has agreed to stay until spring. One of their big concerns was disruption in the middle of the school year because she was going to retire in December. So, and springtime is kind of when we get started for next year, the staffing goes into place, the numbers and everything like that. So she will stay until spring. Some of the comments are interesting, but they're all about our people who know the culture of Cristo River, the culture of Cristo River High School. They, a couple of them, or several of them said they want to mimic what they have there now because they feel like they've got the best principal ever. And so we talked, I went over and talked to them today, to Mr. Mullin. So we talked to them and told them that we would have a decision made by January if we're going to post or if I was going to appoint. And then we would move forward and have somebody on before they went to spring break. So the, when they got back, they'd be up and running.
Thank you, Dr. Connors. That's, that's huge. Thank you, Ms. K. With that, we're going to adjourn this meeting and I will hand it over to the superintendent.
You grabbed the gap.
She did. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
I will now open the organizational meeting of the Citrus County School Board. Board of Statute 1001, Doc 371 specifies that the superintendent shall act as chairman until the organization is complete. Nominations are in order for the office of chairman of the Citrus County School Board.
I nominate Sandy Council.
Second.
Sandy Council has been nominated by, and Ginger Bryant has been seconded by Mr. Dodd. Are there any other nominations? With no other nominations, I will now call for the vote. All in favor, sitting by, aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Congratulations.
I'm not going to dangle this hard as Tom does.
Okay, welcome to the organizational meeting of Citrus County School Board. Florida Statute 1001. What do you want me to add? I forgot what the new chairman, chairman say. Nominations are now in order for the office of vice chairman of the Citrus County School Board.
I nominate, is that Linda Powers?
Second.
That's who she is?
I'm sorry.
Are there any other nominations? Linda Powers was nominated. Any other nominations? Seeing none? Not, the motion to close the nominations is in order?
Close nominations.
If not, vote on the affirmation of Linda Powers as vice chairman? Call for the vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Congratulations to you. Um, can you, the next thing is to set the date for the school board.
Okay, we're going to go back up to this page. Okay, we need to set the date and time for the school board meetings.
I move that we... I move that we set the date for the second Tuesday of each month, beginning at four P.M.
Did you say three?
No, I said four P.M.
Okay, have a motion by Mr. Kennedy for the second and fourth Tuesdays beginning at four P.M. for the regular school board meetings.
Second.
Wait a minute, you didn't say four.
Second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday.
Yeah, we only, yeah, we always set the regular.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, she's.
Good.
Because the fourth begins at nine.
Okay. Well, the fourth is a workshop, you don't set.
I know. I set the regular meeting by Sac.
Okay. Have a motion by Mr. Kennedy to have the second Tuesday of each month at four P.M. for the regular school board meetings, seconded by Doug Dodd. All in favor?
Aye.
And.
We love him, Ms. Powers.
Can I make a motion to set the AC in here at about sixty-eight?
No. Next time the agenda, after that comment, we need to hire our school board attorney.
Move approval to hire.
You may get one nay on that.
Move approval to hire Wes Bradshaw as the school board attorney.
Second. On a motion made by Mr. Kennedy to hire Wes Bradshaw as our school board attorney, seconded by Linda Powers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Bradshaw, you're our attorney again.
Thank you.
And they, we'll check on the air conditioning. You can deal with the vice chairman.
I'll tell this to all of the viewers.
No, please, please. All right, the organizational meeting, if there's no other business, will be adjourned, and we'll open the annual meeting of the Citrus County School Board leasing corporation.
Is there a script?
Yeah, well, I.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
So this is the annual meeting of the Board of Directors of the Citrus County School Board Leasing Corporation, this November twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, following directors are present, Mr. Kennedy, Sandy Council, Linda Powers, Ginger Bryant, and Doug Dodd, there are no directors that are absent. For the core being present, Ms. Council called the meeting to order, and Mrs. Hemel will keep the meeting, the minute of the meeting. The only item of business is the election of officers for the following year. Traditionally, the chairperson, the newly elected chairperson serves as the president of the leasing corporation, the newly elected vice chairperson serves as the vice president of the corporation, traditionally, our director of finance, Ms. Wilson, serves as the treasurer, and Ms. Hemel serves as the secretary of the school board leasing corporation. So is there a motion?
Move approval is recommended.
Second.
With that being, Ms. Council's the president, Ms. Powers is the vice president, Ms. Wilson as the treasurer, and Ms. Hemel as the secretary, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And after that is, you have a motion to adjourn.
To move.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And this is a, the minutes need to be signed by each of you, so Ms. Adele will have those for your signature.
No, no.
Nine.
Preferred.
Hundred percent sure.
Ms. Council, you adjourn, I mean, correct?
Yeah.
Here, I'll tell you what.